Ms. Brown, we are on item 10. You ask that that be pulled?
Yes.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of questions that I wanted to ask. This item is the quarterly update regarding city council-directed homelessness response programs and services, of which there are a growing number. I'm really pleased to see the information in this report, and I think it's really a reflection of a lot of the commitments that have been made over the past several years. So I want to thank you for that. And then others, there may be folks in the audience who want to speak to this, they asked me to pull it. But my questions were, I wasn't able to find, maybe I missed it, information to help us understand what's happening where these, like 1220 and the Safe Parking Program in particular are full. The report speaks to people being at capacity, and so I'm just wondering if you could talk about what happens where people are turned away, wait lists. I mean, how do people begin to think about accessing these sites over the longer term?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mollie.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Brown, Larry Mollie, Homelessness Response Manager. The short answer is, for ongoing capacity that we have with those programs, our city outreach team, our outreach staff are really the principal source of connecting folks in the course of their work with available space at the shelters. The programs, both at 1220 and at the City Overlook, have been close to full capacity for quite some time now, but there is some regular turnover, both for positive housing exits. Some people decide that that's not the program for them. So while they are essentially full, there is typically some available capacity at each of those places. And so our city outreach team works through the course across the city, engaging folks who are unsheltered, and really trying to connect them to the space that we have or other programs that other providers have in the community.
Thank you. A quick follow-up. I read in a separate document for another agency agenda that the, there's a waitlist for the parking program, and so I guess I'm just, if you could, I'm wondering how, I get it that the work is happening and our outreach workers are doing amazing work. I run into them out in the world, and, you know, yeah, they're doing a great job. But just, so do people just sit on the list and then they're contacted when a space comes up? Or how does that?
Yeah, thank you for that. The Safe Parking Program, that's our Tier Three program that is operated by the Free Guide and Association of Faith Communities. That program for recreational vehicles has a capacity of 15, and there actually is a large waitlist of approximately 50. And so the Free Guide actually does regular contact with folks who are on that waitlist to make sure that there's still a need, or if there is a need, to keep that list current. They're in more frequent contact with the folks at the top of the list as they anticipate openings, so that they can begin to do that work. So, yeah, so there is regular contact, rather engagement, ongoing engagement with those folks as well.
And there is a similar, great, thank you. And similar for 1220, is there a waitlist there, or is that through your internal kind of transitioning people into that site?
Right, that is for the outreach team, exactly. Sort of as in the course of their work when they engage folks, you know, there is an interview process. For 1220, it's a self-managed camp that requires kind of a community set of rules and living in that environment. So they do, it's sort of their own kind of interview and assessment, if you will, when they engage folks to see who might be a good candidate for that program. And when there is capacity, they can be considered for that program, or also the overlook.
Thank you. Can I make a quick comment? Because I just want to say, in addition to my comments earlier about really being pleased to see how this programming is being built out, I think that the key takeaways here are, we don't have enough capacity, we don't have the resources to provide the capacity for the level of need we have, and so I'm also very glad to see the conversations happening with collaborating agencies. So, thank you.
Further on this item? Anyone else wish to comment on this item? Matters back before the council on item 10, the recommendation here is to receive the quarterly report. Motion?
I do have someone online.
Excuse me?
We do have public comment. We have someone online for public comment.
Well, there is someone online, okay. Thank you. Let's hear from that person. Good afternoon.
Yes, hello. This is Garrett. Hey, as to the homelessness update, once again, that has always been the case, there's no mention of a numeric goal, time and delivery for a price of reducing homelessness that we may use to judge the program's success for cost, but instead we just get a listing or proposals or a list of ever-expanding services and workers, as if ever-expanding services or assets is in itself accomplishing that undefined goal and at what cost. Where is there an ongoing detailed and comparative financial analysis here of the total homelessness response cost, including staff and cost per homeless person, and the cost to actually elevate someone back into self-sufficiency? And where are those totals for this quarter? How many less net homeless people are there this year, at what cost compared to last year? You got me, I don't think any, but, you know. And how do you define success? Do you consider getting people onto welfare and into housing via welfare as eliminating homelessness? Do you think the city of Santa Cruz should be the Statue of Liberty for the county's homeless to become the welfare grand central station, population center? Do you think growing a bigger welfare state in Santa Cruz is the road to prosperity? Do you think blowing the whole $14 million and more in one year to establish a response infrastructure without a completely approved plan to maintain it is wise? Do you think, dang, if we could just house 1,200 people at any expense, like who cares how much, or even no worries where the money will come from, and put them all together somewhere, then no one else will come to take their place and the problem is solved? Or are there limits, and what do you think they are?
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Matters back before the council. There's a recommendation on this one. Motion, second, second by Ms. Brown. Motion, second. Mr. Norris, good afternoon again, sir.
Yeah. I have to take issue with the idea that the outreach workers have been wonderfully successful, and that they're doing a great job, because I hear exactly the opposite from people, both who they were contacting in the Benchlands, when the Benchlands was being depopulated, destroyed in fact, without adequate shelter alternatives. And then, of course, now again, in the Pogonip area, in the Sycamore Grove area. I attempted, yesterday I was up there watching the police dispersing the area between Highway Nine and the river, and people were desperately taking their stuff out. I requested of Jeremy Leonard what the capacity was. He refused to say it, kept referring me to higher authorities. This is what he does regularly. I don't think it's appropriate to do that, and I thought I would mention it publicly, because I think it's important, if a member of the public can't get what is relatively simple and open information, I'm wondering how homeless people are doing with this too, and I've heard unfortunate reports. So, regarding this particular quarterly report, it doesn't mention as, I kind of take a different slant on it than Garrett Phillips, who just spoke with you, but it doesn't mention any of the costs involved, and how effectively the money is being spent. And that kind of accountability has never been clearly provided that I've seen, at least it's not included in this document. I mean, you hear about, essentially, a lot of money is being spent for a fundamentally small number of people, smaller number of people, compared to the overall needs of the people who are outside. So the matter of there being optimistic assessments, we're working very hard, this is the kind of stuff we heard for years under the earlier councils. But of course, what's happening is, a few, even more than before, are getting served. But, for example, the broader community that was served in 2015 meals at Coral Street no longer is served meals. And that was the case throughout, of course, COVID, and the people that were served meals were served meals by Food Not Bombs, often under hostile action by the police, when they tried to serve, for example, under the ease of parking structures.
Ten more seconds, ten more seconds, just to give you a sense of time.
You told me I was going to have five minutes on this item.
My error, you have.
Your error.
You have three minutes and 10 seconds to go.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. I'm going to cut it short, anyway. I know you're trying to fit into a schedule here, which, I want to encourage you to spend more time on public comment, so that's the point. So, do we know the actual number of people in town who are in vehicles? It's not in this report. We know that there's a waiting list of 50, as you've just heard from Larry Mollie, but you've got a capacity which is already filled, and you're going to have, your, the city is spending money to appeal an OVO ordinance, to essentially drive OVOs completely out of town, for those people who have so-called oversized vehicles. So that, this is happening, all these things are happening at the same time as everything, everyone is, I'm hearing hay, praise heaped upon the HRAP program or the homeless response folks. You have to consider what is actually happening to the average homeless person, whether they're getting the most basic services or have access to them, and if they're not, why not? And how much is it costing to give the appearance of a lot of progress, when in fact it's not real progress for the majority? Some obvious examples are of, for the last six months, there's been no porta-potties, no services up at the Pogonip area. They were pulled out. So you've had 100 or more people up there crapping in the woods, because the city decided it was somehow more cost-effective to do that. Or, as I said before in an earlier comment, is this an attempt to use the hideout or get-out strategy, which I think is a go-to for the city with respect to homeless folks? I think essentially the behavior, well, the reality shows what the answer is to that question. That's it.
Good afternoon.
I'll be brief. My name is James Wing Whitman. I think I made some comparisons to the homeless. I don't know if the archives in this place are available for more than, like, starting three and a half years ago. But what, you know, what I suggested to various people that were in service with the homeless is, why don't they work on the strengths of the homeless? People are getting, people are doing things, holding full-time jobs, their kids are going to school, and they don't have correct housing. What makes a house? You assume it's secure, you secure, you assume it's safe. But I was speaking more than three and a half years ago, that we're all homeless. That has to do with the technology that's around that doesn't give us security, doesn't give us privacy, and doesn't give us safety. So when there is actually some real emergency, we're all going to be homeless, and what are we going to do? Because I think that these subjects are kind of very narrow, and they could be broad. That's enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online, Ms. Bush?
One more.
Good afternoon, person online. You are on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. This is Reggie Misler, Member of Santa Cruz Cares. I just wanted to comment briefly on the ATRAP. I don't want to disparage all of what ATRAP is doing. Obviously, there's a lot of money going towards a lot of very good programs. I just think that there's some problems with the balance of how we do certain things. For instance, in response to the winter storms, as we know, recently with the Civic Auditorium, there was a demand to open it during the most extreme winter storms. Those demands were not answered. Instead of staffing it with one person, we staffed eight police officers to defend the Civic Auditorium from being broken into, which I find somewhat disturbing, especially considering that the Santa Cruz Police Instagram is often toting their ability to operate in a social role, that they cannot be tasked with just watching over the Civic Center as temporary safe sleeping. I think that there's some interesting uses of funding here, right? There's what happened with the Civic Auditorium, there's the vehicle abatement contractor, which was not a lot of money, granted, from ATRAP, but is a position that we used some of ATRAP funding on, which works in contrary to people's, it works with the vehicle abatement hotline to start ticketing and towing and green tagging people based on this unaccountable complaint-based system, and is far more helpful, or harmful than it is helpful. The other thing that ties in with that is that we just recently, in April, got a study that demonstrates that involuntary displacement is bad for public health. So when we talk about health in all policies, and we're talking about involuntary displacement, like what is being done or requested to be done in Pogonip, we have to understand that that is explicitly evidence-based. 23 different cities were looked at, I believe, over a 10-year period. It increases people's overdose deaths. This is exactly what the Santa Cruz County Public Health Officer was anecdotally describing is happening, based on the data he was looking at. So when we sweep people, we are hurting them, we're killing them, we're making public health worse. And so I want the city to take this kind of data into account, because if you're not, you're just working for anti-houseless bigots and fascists. You're not actually doing good public health and good public policy. Thank you.
Anyone else who is with us who wishes to make comment? Seeing and hearing none. Matters back before the council. Ms. Brown.
I'll move.
Ms. Colntire Johnson moves the recommendation.
I'll second that, and if I could make one comment.
Second by Ms. Brown. Ms. Brown on the motion.
Go ahead, and I'll. Okay, so I just, I want to make a comment in response to some of the things that I'm hearing from members of the public, much of which I agree with, about the bigger social problems we have in our community as a result of extreme inequality, unjust institutions that are just, we have, we have a lot of work to do to try to move forward in productive ways. And so I agree with all of that. And when I am laudatory of what I am seeing here, it's because this challenge, it is, we have talked about this as an intractable problem. We have talked about this as something that we can't address, that we just don't have the ability to address. And when I see genuine efforts being made and positive outcomes for, yes, certainly not enough people, but for some people, I believe that's worth being laudatory of. And I think that, you know, with respect to the people who do that work in the field, they're, you know, they need to be supported. And so I just wanted to say that before we take the vote. I do understand, and all of those problems still are on the table, and we have to figure out a way to work together to address them. But we also need to be positive when we take some steps.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Colntire Johnson.
Councilmember Brown took the words out of my mouth, but I'll just, I'll say it my way really quickly. The problem is huge, we're not the only players, and this is exceptional work, and a big thank you to everyone who has gotten us so far in less than a year.
Seeing and hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Newsom?
Aye.
Brown? Aye. Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Colntire Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Aye.
And Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion carries this order. Okay, thank you. We are on item number 11. Ms. Brown, you ask this item to be continued. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to pull this item because it, I believe it's really an important item that is a bit misrepresented in the title, in the, on the consent agenda. The contract is to remove debris, but nothing is really said here about the people. And we know, at least from the previous item, that there are 80 to 100 people that you projected are in that space. So I wanted to, I think that that, if that's the intention, which I believe it is, that needs to be made clear. And so I wanted to ask if you could talk about, a little bit more about this process. And I have, I have one real specific question that's related to this. My understanding was that, and it looks like it's scheduled for May, and I, so I wanted to ask you about Sycamore Grove, because I was told that that was noticed last Friday, and that people were being, at least communicated with, the police were there yesterday. And so I thought this was part of the Pogonip, the overall, and it seems like it just has happened sooner, so I'd like to hear about that as well. Thanks.
I'll address the Sycamore Grove. Sycamore Grove, that location is considered separate from the Pogonip closure process. And yes, it has been noticed. Yes, there's been offers for individuals to go to the Salvation Army. I believe we transported four just recently who accepted offers of shelter. So that is in the process. In terms of the Pogonip, we will be doing a very similar process as we are doing with the Benchlands, where we're doing outreach, and we're working with the county to do outreach as well. They are out there every day. We are now making plans, which includes the refuse contract, to move forward, primarily there's for several reasons for the closure. One is it's extreme fire danger. A fire department already has plans to do vegetation management, which they have done before. As we know, the storms create a lot of underbrush, a lot of growth, that's extreme fire danger, so that's a concern. And as always, the public health, public safety, the folks living there, it's a public health, safety concern as well. So what, the plan is to take our time from about, in the next two weeks, through June, to do a phased closure. And through that process of offering shelter, continuing to connect people to services, providing for storage, very similar in the same process that was quite successful in the Benchlands when we closed that. So that will be the process for closing. And outreach is extremely important, again, and connecting with the county to help us through this process with their caseworkers. In terms of this particular contract, and what is difficult in this location compared to the Benchlands, is the Benchlands is a very flat area, much more, it's easier to work in. This is a steep terrain, it's quite difficult. It will take longer to close, even though it's not as many tents. We have 65, 75 tents of our latest count. We're going out to do another count next week. So yes, that's the process. Again, very similar to what we did in the Benchlands, in offering shelter.
One other question, I lost it, so I'll, I'll think of it and ask you. Thank you.
Further on this item? Any other councilmembers wish to comment on this item? Anyone with us today wish to comment on this item? Anyone online? Ms. Bush, do we have anyone online? I'm sorry, I just, we do? Let's go with one online, then we'll go one here, then one online, then another one here. So, thank you for your forbearance. Good afternoon.
Hey, this is Garrett. Hey, I will be brief here. Hey, as to clearing the homeless Pogonip encampment, I'm not up exactly where that is today, but I want to tell you and relate a story in that I recall, you know, my cat escaped from Kitty Hill Resort, which is right around there, about 15 years ago, and I went looking for him for almost a month, all over the place. In the process, I had an eye-opening, a great many encounters with homeless campsites on the San Lorenzo River, across Highway Nine, while looking for him, mattresses, sleeping bags, trash, or at that Tomato Farm homeless campground on Golf Course Drive, and all along the railroad tracks. That was a really long time ago, and it sure seems like nothing has changed, meaning not for the better, anyway. Except the good news is, I did finally find my homeless cat under that underpass on Golf Course Drive, which was a minor miracle after about a month. And I have no idea if that Tomato Farm homeless camp, which is the first right as you go under the, underpass on Golf Course Drive, is still there. But, you know, at the time, that seemed like a private property, you know, homeless campground solution at no cost to the city, and that was working pretty well. I did talk to a lot of those people there, looking for my cat, and a lot of those people had jobs, and they seemed to be doing okay, and they were just living in their tents. And I assumed that that was at no cost to the city. And I don't know what happened to that, it's still there, but I just tell you that story. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
This morning, I went to Sycamore Grove and, and Pogonip, and walked around, although the cops that were there would not allow me to go to the area that they already closed. But yeah, they swept yesterday. And then another area, they put up notices to sweep on the 15th of Sycamore Grove. I'm curious, it's an interesting thing that happens every single time, is that the camp gets very dirty and messy, and then you want to close it. But I'm curious, like, why can't a little money be spent on a dumpster and porta-potties so it wouldn't be so messy? So you don't have to spend $250,000 to clean it. You know, I think you put yourself in that position, basically blame it, blame on people. And if you live in a house, you have garbage services, you have a garbage can outside your house. You know, so you can, so all you need to do is put a dumpster, which they did years ago, but they, sometimes they do at the beginning, and then they take it away, and then all of a sudden they sweep it, it's too dirty. So that's my comment on closing. And also, the main thing is, where are people going to go? You mentioned that 1220 is almost completely full, City Overlook's completely, almost full, and as well as Armory, so, you know, Jeremy has a little close thing where he particularly know, he picks certain people, and a lot of the people don't last, because they have mental issues, or they have problems with being around other people, so they don't last in the shelter system, and then they're out back in there. It's just a ridiculous system that you're putting people in. It's inhumane, what you're doing to these people, where they have to pack everything up and lose half their stuff. And just a reminder, that just because someone's items happen to be at a location and they're not there, does not mean that they gave up their items. The city is supposed to store those items. So today, one person's items were, he moved from one part of Sycamore Grove to the other, to the upper part of Sycamore Grove, and he put his items there. And I'm really worried that normally you guys clean it, so you're not supposed to clean it. You're supposed to hold it and put it in the police department or somewhere where people can grab it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else online?
Yeah, we had three people now.
Three folks online. Next person online, good afternoon. Good afternoon. We'll go to somebody who's with us here.
He's on now.
Okay, now you're on, we can, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Yes, good afternoon. This is Michael, a resident of Paradise Park. And I drive through Pogonip area, the Grove area twice a day, as does my wife. I'm glad we have this month as senior month, because we have a lot of senior people in Paradise Park, and with the encampments near our entrance, there's a lot of fear driving through there now. We've had one guy accosted, my wife has had an attempted carjacking, all coming back to homeless people who are living in an encampment, as far as I know. The other aspect I'm worried about, and I believe it's mentioned in your agenda items, is fire. There's a redwood forest there. It's not like they're in the city, next to the river, or in a parking area, or anyplace else. They are in the forest. They are in the forest, whether it be on the Pogonip side or the Grove side. I have personally seen people entering those encampments carrying propane tanks and gas cans. And if a fire gets flowing in there, it's going to cost you quite a bit of money and there's going to be a whole lot more homeless to deal with. I'm so sorry people are homeless, whether it's a mental issue, living arrangements, friends or family or act thereof. I do take offense that people calling people, folks, bad people because we don't want them in the forest, but they don't belong in that part of the forest. Simple. It's a danger to themselves, it's a danger to society. And just recently with these heavy rains, the Sycamore Grove area got flooded out and 20 people instantly had to move out. All their belongings went down the river into the ocean. And it's a terrible situation. They deserve help, they need help, but honestly, they don't belong in the forest. And one of my biggest concerns is where are they going to go? Just like a lot of other people. Are they going to go deeper into the forest, become more of a problem? Or is the exit going to be managed so these people are taken care of in the manner that they deserve? So thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you listening to me and I'll lower my hand then.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, sir.
Yes, hello, my name's James J. Whitman. I'll be brief. I went up there today. You know, from the mid 90s to late 90s, I probably rode my bicycle from Felton to Santa Cruz to party and then sober up more than 100 times. Now fortunately, where I parked today and looked around, I didn't see any hypodermic needles on the ground. That was good. So this is number 21, it has to do with the homeless money, the $250,000 for whatever it's going to be spent for. At some point, I'll make a connection from number five to number 21 and how it relates to number 11. You know, I think it's kind of pitiful that people litter as much as a corporation does. Because I've, for years in this town, it's incredible how dirty it is that people that just don't care, very much like a corporation. Because the other side of that is terrorism. That's the people who are being terrorized. I'll continue at number 21. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Another person online, correct? Good afternoon.
Hi, it's Reggie Meisler again. I just want to echo a little bit about what Abby was saying, which is that there are obviously not 70-plus open shelter spaces for everyone up at the Pogonip. And so if everyone asked for shelter, you wouldn't be able to give it to them. And so I guess I'm just curious, like, how do you see this kind of thing playing out with Martin v. Boise? Because you're moving ahead as though enough people will reject shelter space. What do we have, like, three open shelter spaces? All we need is like four people to say they'll accept shelter and now you can't sweep the camp. Like, are you taking that into consideration? Because this is a constitutional requirement of Martin v. Boise, is that if you do not have shelter space, you can't sweep. So I'm just very curious about how you plan, or how city staff rather, plans to handle that particular situation? Because it seems as though, similar to with the closing of the Benchlands, there's simply no consideration as to whether this is even like lawful to do. There's just an assumption that you can kind of get away with it if you do it in a particularly tricky way. I think the other thing that I would bring up here, just for everyone's sort of edification or sort of, I don't know, let's say it's experiencing, is that here we have, what do we hear from Santa Cruz together and Santa Cruz neighbors, folks? Not in the city. Like, we don't want them in the city, outside city limits. Well, here they are. They're in the forest and people don't want them in the forest either, right? This is what happens when your entire like economy is mostly controlled by like the demands of people who are invested in real estate or the gentrification of real estate or the privatization of real estate, is that nobody wants anything anywhere. It doesn't matter if it's in the most remote part of the woods and they never see it and that never affects them in any way, they don't want it there. And because they have the most sort of economic power in our economy right now, you're going to probably listen to them for, you know, even small businesses who are not real estate-based. So I just want to sort of call out this sort of interesting dynamic that even in the sort of remote woods, people don't want unhoused people. So this is not, this is, it sort of reveals so quickly how unsustainable this nimbyish logic is, that, oh, they can't be there, but I don't know where they can be, but they can't be there. Like, obviously, we know what people want and what works, which is tiny houses, individualized shelter space, even if it's not that great. And I think you can economically, pretty efficiently provide that for people. So maybe start looking into that a little bit more. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hi, Joy Shendeldecker. Three of us were campaigning last fall when the Benchlands were cleared. Mayor Keely, Councilmember Colin Tari Johnson, and me. And none of us thought that the Benchlands was a good situation. We all want to protect the people in the camps and the environment. But Mayor Keely and Councilmember Colin Tari Johnson spoke very publicly about how it was so unsustainable for people to be in the Benchlands that it had to be cleared as quickly as possible. Now, I agree, like, that's no place for people to be in the winter when it floods. And the Pogonip is nowhere for people to be in the fire season. But if the Benchlands was a horrible place for people to be, where vulnerable people were exploited sexually and economically, the Pogonip is not better. And now the Pogonip is being cleared and Sycamore Grove. And as many other people have said, there is no mention of where people can go, aside from the few people who will accept shelter space for the few shelter spaces that are open. And that does mean that there are going to be 50, 100 more people who will continue to move around the city between spaces wherever they can. As long as people don't have space to go where they're allowed, this is going to keep happening, it's been happening for at least 40 years, probably since colonization. As soon as you exclude people from the system, they go where they can survive. Right? So that's, that's one point. And another point is, I think that we've spent about a million dollars in the past year just on cleanups. And for, for Sycamore Grove and the Pogonip, there's been little to no sanitation or waste management services for them. So $250,000 is going to be spent again. And, you know, when they go in with their heavy equipment, they grind up debris that's left in the ground and it gets compacted, broken and compacted into the top layers of the dirt. I've seen this multiple times at multiple camps. There are better ways to do cleanups with people who live outside. There are better ways to avoid people moving from place to place unsanctioned. And that million dollars, I bet could have spent, you know, that's a lot of portable toilets and hand washing stations and rent, you know, and other living spaces. So that's all I got to say for right now. Thank you.
Ms. Bush, anyone else online? One more online?
One more.
One more. Good afternoon.
Thanks for having me. It's Keith McHenry. And I saw, listened to staff say that the Benchlands eviction was very successful. And of course, the core part of that illegal and inhumane and cruel aspect of that, of that sweep was that those people then went to Highway 9, Sycamore Grove and the Pogonips. That's where they went. So it was not so successful. So now you're going to have those people, and it may be many more people than what the, what the city is admitting to, will be back down on the levees and in the doorways of downtown until they get swept back into Pogonip. And it's not a solution and it's, you know, every few weeks, we hear that another few million dollars is going to be given to the city or the county to deal with homelessness. But all it is, is this inhumane, tragic disruption of people's lives over and over again with no actual solutions and no intention of solutions. And the reason there is no intention of solutions is the people on this council, the people in the Board of Supervisors, the people in this, in the higher levels of management and staff in the, in the city and county do not perceive homeless people as people. And that is at the core of the problem. Your council has repeatedly referred basically to these individuals, these families, these people that are struggling, as essentially trash. And that's why, you know, all through the Benchlands eviction, we, even for the two years of the Benchlands, that we tried to negotiate with the city to actually provide real solutions, there was no will. Because there is a perception that these are varmints, are rats, transients, vagrants, drug addicts, mentally ill people. So they're not worth any resources on their behalf. We have, I think that Joy's underestimating the amount of millions of dollars that have been wasted, year after year after year, which could have provided housing and, and access to addiction treatments and to healthcare and things which were never offered, never provided. And it cuts down to that core thing, which these are useless eaters, that at some point you're going to place in internment camps. And that just saddens me that you cannot at all consider these humans as the people they really are and that to you, they're just trash and they can get put away in some internment camp somewhere else. So it's really, it's frightening that we're at that point in, in our history of our country and of our city and the county.
Good afternoon, sir. For the record, Mr. Norris requested in a timely manner additional time. That time has been granted to him on this item. Good afternoon.
And a thanks to Mayor Keely for that. You know, yes, it's unfortunate that people are so afraid of homeless people as they drive through the Pogonip from the areas where you can drive at, where most of them you can't from Felton. But, but remember, there are lots of seniors who are also living in the Pogonip outside. At least I met some of them yesterday when I was there. And remember that you found out before, when you attempted to move people without paying attention to the fact, it's not just you have to have a bed for everybody you move. When you look at it, moving a group of people, whether you have asked them, whether they'll take it or not, you need to have provision for that group. This is what the injunction was granted on the basis of up in San Francisco in December. So it's not, it's not, it's not applicable here yet, but it could be so argued and probably should be so argued. Because this business of switch them around, musical beds that Jeremy Leonard and others are playing, perhaps under orders from higher management, this is not necessarily to blame Jeremy for that particular thing, is, it's, it's a scandal, it's disgraceful, it's beneath the dignity of the community. It's not beneath the dignity of the council. The council does it all the time and the staff makes money doing it. So that's not, that's not really the issue. But the issue is for the rest of us, it sucks. It's bad. And it's, it also tempts an injunction. So for instance, Ross Camp, when you tried to do this with Ross Camp, didn't fly, an injunction held up for a week at least. And when you tried it against the Duck Pond area, held up for a year and a half. And then, and the city decided that the actual proposal by the Union of the Homeless to use the Benchlands was a good one. And remember where the Benchlands came from? It came from police chief and city manager, not the city manager currently here, but the city manager. They were directed there. That's why they went there. And so to sweep them away again, I would hope that some legal eagles will in fact hold the city accountable for this and get some kind of damages. Because you're obviously creating damage when you do this. When you, because I've seen people trying to try scuttling to get their property out, police officers stopping the press, which I'm a member, I do a radio show, a net radio show. And I tried to get in there yesterday. I was stopped by armed force. Police officer said, we will arrest you if you walk any further. I said, I'm pressed. That doesn't matter. Well, you can't go there. You can't, you can't, you can't help these people or document what's going on. They didn't say that, but that was the impact of what they did. And that's what's going to be happening throughout the Sycamore Grove and throughout the Pogonip for the next month. And that's what this council is responsible for. Even the council members, Martine Watkins, Renee Golda, and the other ones who are not even keeping their eyes on speakers who are talking, I don't care about me, but I've been watching, you know, you've got other things to do than talk about this homeless nonsense, I know.
Focus in.
I am focusing because the council has the power.
What I'd like to do is let's not get into ad hominem, just address the issue.
Well, I'm not trying to be ad hominem, I'm referring to the professional duties of council members here. I'm encouraging the entire council to pay attention to these speakers, or at least to pretend to pay attention.
Mr. Norris, I'm going to ask you again. Council members can pay attention in a wide variety of ways. I'd like, I'm going to ask you again, address the issue, please. Thank you.
I have been interrupted and I will continue. It is my perception when a council member isn't looking, they're not paying attention. But if they're not, if you aren't paying attention, I thank you. And I will thank the council for doing that, if that's the case. But it's hard to know because the council's comments don't usually necessarily indicate that. So the basic issues have been raised. The notion of fire danger, I haven't, I don't know about the nature of fire danger at the moment, but up in Felton, it's low. That's, that's the situation according to the sign outside the fire department. So you certainly don't need to be going after people this last weekend like you did. But as has been pointed out, this is a pretext. And the real issue here is, for instance, as I've been told by some staff members, what happens at the shelters is they evict people who are in the shelters in order to provide room so the police can say, we have a place for you to go, get out of here, get off this area. If that is the case, it is, I would hope it's illegal and if it isn't illegal, it's scandalous and it's abusive and someone at this council should request it be looked into. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else online? Anyone else? Matter is back before the council. Council, the vice mayor is recognized.
I'd like to move item 11.
Motion to approve the recommendation as presented in the packet. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by, excuse me, by Ms. Watkins, under discussion, debater discussion, Ms. Brown and Ms. Brunner.
Well, I actually have a few comments that I'm, I've been thinking about, but I also want to be mindful of the time. We have people who are coming into the room to have a scheduled presentation. So I'll just say here, I have a long history, as you all know, of opposing encampment clearances for all of the reasons that people have, many of the reasons people have talked about and others. Until we have places for people to go, we will continue to chase people around. It immiserates their lives, it costs the city money. It's a dynamic that's been going on for as long as I can remember and I've not supported it. And, but I want to say that in this case, fire danger is very real. It will become even more real in the coming months. And I think it's important that we address this problem, which some of us projected would, we would be facing after closure of other encampments and including myself, who didn't support that. But in this case, I think it's really important to move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further on this item, Ms. Brunner.
Thank you. Thank you for all the comments today and online. And this item is a Pogonip refuse disposal and abatement contract. I walked the area and the amount of refuse that was in that area was pretty outstanding. And I think, you know, it's really important that I want to respond quickly to a couple of the questions that were brought up. I want to respond quickly to a couple of the questions that were brought up. And, you know, this isn't about a closure, it's about the cleanup contract. And staff did mention earlier about the phased approach that would be happening in this area. So the question about if there's only four shelter spaces, and however many people above that, what happens? Well, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I am asking staff, my understanding, based on the earlier comment, was that it pauses, and then it continues. And I think the reason why that's starting now, this phased process, because it does take time before the fire, the extreme fire danger and a forced closure by fire department. So, given that we need that time to do that phased approach. And so, you know, it's so sad that we are here talking about this. And it's so sad to walk those areas and see people living that way. And, you know, there are comments about people not wanting homeless people in their area. And I know I talked to a lot of people where that's not the case. It's more about, or even the caller who called in, seniors living in Paradise Park, and they're afraid. It's the behaviors that they're, that people have a hard time with, not the people. At least, you know, people that I've talked to and have concerns. Everybody wants people to get help, and whatever their needs are, to have housing. We have housing coming. So I want to keep that in mind, that as we keep moving forward, there are repetitive cycles that we've seen. But at the same time, there are steps forward in terms of the long term that are happening, that I think will have a positive impact. And we're not talking at all either about the fact that people wanting shelter, or even help in the form of mental health, or any other component, it's voluntary. So as we reach out, and I know that as a council member, I've directed to staff, that our outreach is really happening. We had the conversation with, you know, the presentation earlier, making sure there's less law enforcement response. And those things are happening, but there is a people component, there's an environmental component. And thank you, city staff, for getting this area safe and clean and clear, and for doing it in a phased approach.
Thank you. Further on this item? Very, hopefully briefly, a couple of thoughts. One is, I was not on the council until December, and so this is my first experience with this particular activity. As a resident of the city, I must say that, at that point, I was distressed by the situation that took place at Ross Camp, and equally distressed at the Benchlands. Neither of those, nor is the Pogonip a right and proper place for folks experiencing homelessness to try to live a healthy life. It's my understanding that when the Benchlands was cleared, that something on the order of 70% of the folks who were there, something, excuse me, something on the order of 30% of the folks who were there were willing to accept one or more offers of assistance, everything from some kind of sheltering option to various kinds of social services spanning a fairly large spectrum. And it's my understanding that that was a similar number with regard to the Ross Camp at the time. And as the gentlelady said a few minutes ago, or just a moment ago, these are voluntary actions. It does seem to me that as we move forward with the challenge of how to assist those folks that are experiencing homelessness, that we know the state is coming in, and whether people will have a wide variety of views, whether this is good, bad, or indifferent, but the cares courts are arriving. And that will be an entire public policy debate and discussion about the relative wisdom of that, and how that is assembled. That is a county activity, as Health and Human Services rightfully belong for the county government. They are subdivisions of the state. They exist to provide Health and Human Services. You can wander around this place all day, and you won't find a city department of health or a city department of mental health, because that's not what cities do. I think the helpful thing we can do on this is to identify those opportunities for providing safe, clean, healthy housing, shelter, navigation center, permanent supportive housing, into which county government and nonprofits are going to pour their wonderful Health and Human Services. As it relates to the current challenge, it seems to me that it is not even close question about whether it is healthy or safe for people to be in the Pogonip for very much longer, given the wet winter and the vegetation and the fire danger. You can drive up to Felton CDF, fair enough. You can drive up to Felton CDF today, and it will say "fire danger low." That does not mean that you should keep people there necessarily, and only wait until it's extreme fire danger, and then start thinking about what to do on that. I do think that both the city has a greater obligation than what we have undertaken so far in that space. But I think the great area of advancement on solving the issue really does, and I'm not trying to point to another government to excuse this government, but the state government and the county government are designed to do this. They are designed and intended to solve the area, the kinds of problems that many folks spoke of today. That is not a city government role and responsibility. We do have roles and responsibility. And we are going to get to an item later tonight, later this afternoon, which will go to the question of whether or not the public may want to have an affordable workforce housing bond. And what proper place in there we could locate a fund or funding source for those who are experiencing homelessness? And what is the right and proper element to be included in that measure? We will talk about that later this afternoon. Clerk will call the rule.
Councilmembers Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Colentari Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goldar?
Aye.
And Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion passed. This is a so ordered.